Hello, welcome to Forest Focus. It's two years to date since Nottingham Forest have promoted to the Premier League, but time stands still for no one as the club looks to push on. So what are the future of the City Ground? We heard from Reds chairman Tom Carriage at the weekend and today I'm joined by councillor Steve Batromatch to address the issue from the city council side of the fence. Steve, how are you doing? Good to have you with us.
Yeah, good. Thanks, Matt. Remembering that day two years ago, both the game and then the celebrations the day after is brilliant.
We will come on to that at the end. Obviously, we're here mostly to talk about the stadium situation as it's such a big issue for the fanbase. Just before we do, I'm sure lots of people are familiar with you, but there are probably ones who aren't. Tell us a bit about yourself from the councillor's point of view and also the Forest fan point of view.
Yeah, I'm coming up for my 12th year as a city councillor for Labour in Warrington. For the past year, I was in charge for the council of things like property and economic development. So I had a lot to do with the discussions around Forest. And now I'm returning to the back benches for the next year, but still an active councillor. I've got a very strong interest in this issue because I'm also a lifelong Forest fan, season ticket holder, home and away, with the scars to prove this sort of support over the years.
How long did you go back as a Forest fan? Without giving your age away too much, how long will you be going back for?
Well, no, I don't mind. I mean, I was taken for my fifth birthday in 1967, so that gives it away, which I looked up in the history books with a 0-0 with Man U and stood at the front of the Trent End. Didn't really go again until 74, the famous Duncan McKenzie game where I was put over the wall in the main stand. But my real start was ironically the 77-78 season. It was my first season as a season ticket holder. And once you start and you win the league, you just never look back, do you? So that was me hooked for life.
So obviously you've got loads of City Ground memories and people, generations are building them up. Lots of fans don't want to move, quite a few do as well. There are people who feel like it would benefit the club to move on. From the city council point of view, I asked Tom Carriage this, my first question on the issue was this one as well, so I'll ask you it. What is happening from the city council point of view and what do you want to happen with the City Ground issue?
Well, we certainly want the talks to resume and to be successful and really to be, you know, behind closed doors, to be honest. I mean, we haven't sought, I don't think, to have this public spat over the past few weeks. But we were painted into a corner where it looked to the Nottingham public like the council were holding the club to ransom. And we didn't think that was a fair assessment of the situation. So we did speak out to say that we were, you know, willing to talk at any time. And, you know, I really hope that we can just, now that the season's over, get back around the table, thrash this out, get a lease or the freehold sorted and just move on in a way that the club, the city and the fans want us to do.
Is there a feeling within the council that the club wants to move ultimately? And they're painting you as the bad guys in this, or is that a bit of an unfair stretch?
I think when it was, I think when the club first did a interview with the BBC in February, a lot of people said, oh, they're putting out the prospect of a move as a negotiating tactic. But then as things developed, sort of March, April time, and we started to hear, you know, talks about Toton and, you know, actively looking for a different ground. And then the narrative building up that the club needed to look at a 50,000 seater stadium. It seemed to many of us that, you know, the club had started to move on. But again, you know, different views were around. People were still saying, oh, well, they're still negotiating, really. They're still trying to get a better deal. Our argument was that we thought we were offering, you know, the valuation as was given to us by an independent valuer and that we thought that was reasonable, given the financial situation that the council's in.
I'll come back to the terms of the deal and a couple of aspects to it to pick your brain about that. I mean, it sounds like relations aren't great or weren't great, but they are at the end of the season, as you said. And also there's been a change of leader, David Mellon's departed, Negat Khan's coming in. I'm not saying that, you know, he's done a, you know, he's at fault or anything like that, but a fresh pair of eyes and a fresh pair of ears. Is it kind of an opportunity for a reset potentially?
Yeah, absolutely. We had a discussion about this in full council only a couple of weeks ago at Negat's first meeting. And I asked a question from the back benches that we, you know, A, that we should be welcoming Forest then in the Premier League, but B, that we should be looking to go back around the table and get a deal done as soon as possible. And Negat responded to that very positively and made a public statement to say that she wanted to meet the club and to try and get the issue settled. So, you know, I am quite hopeful that things will progress. Now, what, how exactly that progresses in terms of leases, freeholds, you know, et cetera, et cetera, will be for those negotiations. But, you know, I'm slightly more confident than I was, you know, three or four weeks ago, that we might now be able to sit back down and get on with it.
One thing that sort of clouds matters, or as I understand it kind of clouds matters, is the finances of the city council are so perilous that basically all your decisions, big decisions, go through central government. And we've got a general election coming up. Does that mean things have to be on the back burner until we know which party's in charge? And I'll ask about which party is in a second, but does it put things on the back burner potentially?
Well, the general election's in just over five weeks, so I don't even got long to wait. And I think the bookies have given up on thinking that the Conservatives are going to win the next election. So I think we know where we're heading in terms of the direction of travel, although my Labour PR line is that you never take anything for granted until polling day and every last vote is counted. But I think, yes, we have got commissioners. Big decisions go through commissioners and a sale of the freehold or a 250-year lease would go through commissioners. But that doesn't mean it necessarily has to wait till the outcome of the general election, you know. But the reality is these things take time anyway. So, you know, even if we were sitting down to get into the nitty gritty next week, you know, by the time you've drawn up final agreements and solicitors are involved and everything else, it's probably going to be a few more weeks to get it all sorted.
Does a Labour government smooth the road though a little bit? A Labour council dealing with a Labour government, it'd probably easier politically to make deals happen, is it?
Well, I would hope so. You know, I think what we've seen over the past few weeks was, you know, Nottingham and Nottinghamshire is quite strange politically in terms of you've got the city with three Labour MPs and the county at the moment with all Conservative and one Reform MP. And a lot of those, you know, were connected to the club in some way and popping up at club events and this, that and the other. And Ben Bradley was running from there, which he didn't get, you know, in five weeks, that outlook could look quite different in the county and we could have a lot more Labour MPs around the city. And the club's going to have to, you know, come to terms with that in terms of some of the people that he's been dealing with might not be around. But I don't think the Labour government are going to get into the real detail about whether you sell the land or whether you do a lease. What I'm hoping for longer term with a future Labour government is that finances for local councils might be a little bit easier. But, you know, we're currently consulting on the closure of four libraries. So, you know, you've got to kind of take into account that the situation this city is in financially. If you're consulting on the closure of libraries, if the future of community centres is under threat, if you haven't got enough money to deal with homelessness in the city, you can't then come to an agreement on a price for a building or a plot of land or a lease that's under the value that the valuers tell you it is. I used this equation before that if this was a League Two side on the view of going out of business, you know, a Barry or Rochdale or whatever, and, you know, they were looking to the council to help them stave off administration, then sometimes councils can step in and help out in those situations. But we're not in that situation. We're in a Premier League football club with an owner that's put a lot of money in. And I think taxpayers, council taxpayers, the city residents would expect the council to get a good deal for any sale or any lease.
Is there not an argument to say football's an exceptional business? The city benefits so much from the, you know, what Forest bring in commercially. We sort of take that at the weekend, pubs and bars heaving. We see that every other Saturday during the season. Is there not an argument to say the council should make a concession to give Forest, you know, almost a peppercorn rent arguably, because of the financial impact they have on the city commercially and jobs wise?
Look, I certainly accept that there is a massive benefit of the City Ground being a Premier League club, 500 yards from the city border. It clearly does impact on the city in terms of hotels, the tourist industry, pubs in particular. You look what's happened to Trent Navigation, for example, which we all enjoy pre-match and post-match. But some of that obviously is in the county as well, in Rushcliffe. But we can't give peppercorn rents to community organisations who are delivering services for the most needy in the city. So we can't give a peppercorn rent to a Premier League football club. So yes, you take into account what value it brings. And I'm sure that's part of the negotiations. But it's not as straightforward as just saying, oh, well, they bring in tourism, therefore we have to discount it by 50% or whatever. I mean, the city tries to be as supportive as we can to the club. And we have mutually benefited over the past 45 years, since Forest won the European Cup, of the name recognition of the city and the club going together. And we want to see that continue. And if you look at things like the celebrations in the Market Square and the council house reception, if you look at the fact that the city's tourist information office in the Market Square is now two thirds of that is now the Forest Club Shop, you know, that all happened in the past two years. So, you know, the support is there from the city council to the football club and we want it to continue.
Let me ham-fistedly move to a sponsorship ad because you mentioned the Trent Navigation there, which lets me mention them. If I haven't already, get your tickets for Forza Fest on Saturday, the 8th of June. Tickets are £15. Tomgiganty.com or the Trent Navigation website, or you can scan the QR code on screen. And pair with that, of course, is our live show on the 13th of June, Thursday, the 13th, at the nav, Lewis and Gary on the panel with podcast regulars. One pound for every ticket goes to charity as ever as well. And we'll have a raffle on the night for some decent prizes, I'm sure. Let's go back to what we were talking about, Steve. What's the situation with the freehold as well? You had it reported independently valued at around 10 million. I think Tom said it, you know, wasn't quite the figure or something along those lines, but without getting into the nitty gritty, what's the council's stance on the freeholds and the potential to sell it to Forest?
Yeah, I mean, I think in all the interviews we've done, both myself, David Mellon and all the comments from the city council in public, we have never got into the exact details of how much the lease would be or how much the freehold sale would be, because we don't think it's good to, you know, negotiate that in public over social media or over even a great podcast like this, Matt, with respect. So we can't really get into the exact figures. But, you know, the figures were reported and the club themselves talked about the figures quite often in their own statements, particularly when they were talking about the length of the lease and how much the lease would cost them over 250 years. Now, our position, since the new lease was up for negotiation, was that there was an option of buying the freehold or having a longer lease. The club wanted a longer lease initially in order to do the work, to build the bigger stand, to build the associated work where the boat club is, et cetera. And because of that desire for a new footprint, that obviously triggered what would be a new cost. And so I think it's all possible for the club and the council to sit down and to agree what those figures should be. And I think hopefully now the club might be starting to think, well, actually, the terms that the city were offering in terms of the independent valuation actually are not that bad.
It's just there have to be concessions as well on the council side. I don't know how it would work. But there's so much bureaucracy, it seems, around council planning and everything. It's taken five years to go nowhere, really. Is it, I think, just a frustrating process? People said, get together and bang some heads together. Is that kind of what needs to happen on both sides, do you think?
Yeah, I think there's probably a bit of that, if I'm honest. You've got three councils involved. It doesn't help. You've got Rushcliffe Borough Council that's the planning authority because the ground is situated within Rushcliffe Borough Council. You've got the County Council that Rushcliffe is part of that's got some involvement in transport and in and out of the ground and, you know, the aesthetics around the ground, which is all in the County Council area. And then you've got the City Council that owns the land. So, you know, it was always complex from a council point of view. And then you do get the kind of he said, she said, you know, both sides blaming each other. Now, personally, I think we've got to get beyond that, sit down, thrash it all out. Because I think the vast majority of the fans want to stay at the City Ground, I certainly do. You know, that might not be forever. That might not be in five, 10 years' time if the club are, you know, expanded to 42,000 and we still can't get everybody in and we're knocking on the doors of Europe. Then, you know, I'm sure that ambition from the owner to build a bigger ground might have to come into fruition at some point. But in the short term, surely it's quicker to build on what we've got from a club's point of view and get more fans in now.
What about, I asked Tom this as well, around timescales. I guess the onus is more on Forest because it's their rent for 33 years. But do the council need to set a date on this when it needs to be resolved from your point of view or not?
Well, not really, because they've got a 33-year lease and they can stay on that 33-year lease. But if they want to expand the ground, they need a longer lease because the way that it works commercially, I'm not a commercial expert by any means, but as I understand it, if you then commercially want to borrow against what you're developing, you need a longer lease than 33 years. So that's where we got into the lease argument about how long the lease would be for and what sort of deal it would be. Now, you know, if they own the freehold, then, you know, that's a different ballgame for the club.
Before, I'll ask you a question about moving to a different location. I mean, do you see Forest's frustration? Especially, I guess, Evangelos Maranakis's frustration. It's a different country, you know, in Greece, in Athens. I don't know if it's easier to get things done or not, but he's got a lot done. Do you kind of see his frustration thinking, well, I'm putting all this money in, why can't this just happen? I want to make it happen?
Yeah, absolutely. Look, he's come in, he's put a hell of a lot of money into the club. Fans understand that and fans appreciate that. But the systems for operating that in Greece and England are completely different. And you can't just, you know, cut through that red tape and just build a stand and, you know, sod the rest sort of thing. It just doesn't work like that. Now, I am as frustrated as anyone at the length of time this has all taken. I was at the 2019 launch at the ground when they showed all the plans for the expanded Peter Taylor Stand. You know, we were going to knock it all down, weren't we? We were going to put up a new stand. I think there was talk about, oh, we'll even get the first bottom rung of it done by the Christmas and get people into the bottom half. And so, you know, we'll be able to get people back in the ground quite quickly. You know, people were excited in 2019. Now, obviously Covid got in the way and then Forest got promoted, but, you know, we should have had a bigger ground. Again, speaking as a fan, we should have had a bigger ground for a while now because, you know, you look at the attendances we were getting. I did a bit of studying back. We were getting 28, 29,000 towards the end of League One. You know, six weeks after Megson left, we got 29,000 in the ground. And Megson left as seventh bottom of League One. So, you know, the potential for a bigger ground for Forest, you know, expanded City Ground should have always been there.
If the City Ground isn't viable, have you offered, to your knowledge, or would you offer a different piece of land within the city council's boundaries, given what we talked about around the commercial impact of the football club? Would you offer them something else in the city?
Well, I think the city would. If the club at some point say they're definitely going to move, then obviously I I would think that we would want to keep them as close to the city or in the city if possible. Now, the trouble is the city's got quite tight boundaries. There are loads of space around. And people often talk about, oh, there's this bit of space near the Eastcroft incinerator just off London Road and that's been talked about in the past. Well, yeah, it has been talked about in the past, but there are lots of logistical problems there, i.e. there is an incinerator there that provides district heating to 8,000 homes in the city centre. So that's not a quick fix because how do you get around that? And in terms of other space within the city boundary, you know, I've looked at this myself and kind of thought as a fan, where would that be? Well, potentially the embankment, isn't it, on the other side of the Trent? But how would that fit with people in the meadows and other people that use the embankment for all sorts of other activities? If you just stuck the Forest ground there. So, but I think, you know, I'm sure, well, we know the club are looking at it, don't they? If sign this MOU, memorandum of understanding with the county council, looking at venues, whether that's for a training ground or a new ground, might be still being looked at. But I don't think many Forest fans want to go to Toton, do they? You know, it just seems a long way from the city. City. And I think firstly, to me, expanded City Ground, if we can get it. And then if the club eventually want to move, we want it to be in the city or as close to the city as possible.
I suppose does Toton kind of, is it a case of rolling out the red tape in Toton and saying, here's the land, do what you want with it? And taking out the bureaucracy? Is that, you're speaking for Forest now, is that the attraction of it in a way?
Yeah, I would imagine from a Forest ownership's point of view, it's a big piece of land. They can put a ground there, they can put a training ground there, they could put a hotel there, they could put shops there, you know. It could be a whole complex, couldn't it? They would still have to deal with two councils, which would be Broxtover Council for planning and the County Council, who I think own the land. It was land that was originally designated for HS2. So there might be some issues that need to be looked at there. But I know the County Council are keen to try and progress that land. Now, you know, that might be what's driving the discussions they're having with Ben Bradley. You know, he's currently the leader of the County Council, at least for another year. So it'd be interesting to see what happens at Toton.
Just lastly on this issue, I mean, we've all had this conversation amongst us about what we think will happen. Do you believe as we sit here right now, this will get resolved? Or do you think it probably won't and they'll probably leave the City Ground? Is that your, this is your gut instinct I'm asking for more than anything. What do you think?
I'm more optimistic now than I was a few weeks ago. And the reason for my optimism is that I think the reaction from fans is that people would clearly prefer to stay at the City Ground if at all possible. I think that's been made clear in, you know, all sorts of forums, not least the City Ground itself from fans' chants. Now, I think the club know that building a new ground from scratch will take years. And therefore, if they want to get more people into the City Ground in the short term, they've got to expand. And therefore, they've got to come to a deal with the council, they've got to then increase the capacity at City Ground in the short term. As I say, if that then moves on in five, 10 years' time to say, well, it's still not big enough, then I think that's an argument that a lot of fans would be open to. You know, nobody from a fan's perspective, you know, wants to limit the ambition of the owner. And if we could sustain a 50, 55,000-seater stadium somewhere and we're regularly in Europe, you know, why wouldn't we want to do that? But, you know, let's be realistic from my point of view as a fan that is seen as in League One. You know, let's just expand the ground we've got for the time being. Let's get another 10,000 people in there, another 12,000 people in there and go from there.
Yeah, but I guess they would say, you don't want to spend 100 million making it 10,000 big and then have to spend 500 million building a new stadium. I guess would be the economics of that argument, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And so I suppose it depends how serious the owner is about a new ground, how quickly they think they can get it up. And, you know, if somebody's telling them they can get a new ground up and running in three, four years, they might just take the hit on putting a couple of boxes in the corners and think they can get away with 30,000 for the next four years. It'd be a shame for all those people who want to come because I think a new stand could go up a lot quicker than that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the Spurs stadium took 15 years from start to finish, I think. But then equally, I sort of said this earlier, it's been five years and we've not gone anywhere with the City Ground. Just I guess is why, like, fans are getting frustrated as well, aren't they? If you weren't a councillor, I suppose, if you were just a fan, you'd probably be thinking, what's going on here, wouldn't you?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I've got, you know, lots of Forest mates, as you'd expect. And, you know, people are always in my ear all saying, you know, why is this? Why is this happening? All the council dragging their feet. And that's what, why I spoke out a few weeks ago, because I didn't really think we were dragging our feet. You know, I'm not someone who's just going to parrot whatever line the council give me, you know. Been around long enough to have some independent thought. And, you know, bureaucracies can always be bureaucracies and need to be speeded up at times. But I kind of think that what was being offered by the council to the club was doable by the club. And I thought that they were being slightly disingenuous to kind of start a ball rolling where people ended up blaming the council for something that I didn't think it was justified that we were getting blamed for.
Yeah, I guess it's a planning law thing as well. Like, just getting planning permission, it seems to have taken forever. I don't even know if they even got full planning permission at the end with the boathouse and everything. And if that was resolved as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's Rushcliffe Borough Council. They claim, I think, that things were in place. You know, it becomes a bit of he said, she said. So I think at some point Rushcliffe said, oh, all we're waiting for now is for the council to agree a new lease. And if that's the case, then if they sign a new lease, they can go on with it, can't they?
Okay, okay. Yeah, it'll be interesting, obviously interesting to see how it develops. But yeah, good to get the council side of matters after speaking with Tom at the weekend. Were you at Wembley two years ago then?
I was, absolutely. What the best game, was it? But it was just a relief at the final whistle. I tell a story that, you know, I went with my, I think he was 25 at that point, 25-year-old, who I'd been taken to Forest since he was five. And it's seen as in League One, it's seen as in the Championship playoffs and, you know, all those things. And for him to witness us getting promoted and then coming with me for the last two years, again, to now a Premier League team, it was just magical and it, you know, still is.
Yeah, certainly is, certainly is. Just one more advert before we get some final thoughts from Steve. Heavy Metal Football, this is City Ground t-shirt actually, I think. It's a place on the river called Home. Forrest Garibaldi quote, I think, is right in saying, pre-order ends on the 31st, so two days from now. heavymetalfootball.co.uk And if you go to their website, you can get 25% off using the code FORESTFOCUS. Different t-shirt there. You can get online from heavymetalfootball.co.uk. If you're watching on YouTube, modelled by our own Ruby Naylor and do check out Ruby's film, although that will be on our feed this time tomorrow. You guys, if you haven't seen it already. Any final thoughts, Steve? As ever, we give people a chance. Any final thoughts, any lessons learned as well? Ask Tom this question. Any lessons learned from the process for you from a council point of view?
Well, yeah, I think speed and the ability to get things done without it becoming a big public row. I think, you know, it's a good lesson for anybody, isn't it? You know, and council is not immune from that. You know, we get a lot of adverse publicity at times and sometimes we just need to try and resolve things behind closed doors and not get dragged into public spats. But I think councils in and of themselves are financially stretched. They're also bound up with all sorts of red tape and planning laws and best value considerations and this, that and the other, which the vast majority of the public don't know about and don't want to know about. So really, if the aim of the council, which it is, is to reach an amicable agreement with Nottingham Forest, you know, really, that should be our first and primary objective is to just to sit down and get that deal done.
Hopefully so, hopefully so from lots of people's point of view. And I've always said, like, my point of view would be develop the City Ground and then build a training ground at Toton or something like that. That'd be my personal win-win. Right, hopefully that was some food for thought for people and people enjoyed it. As ever, if you haven't already, do us a favour, hit like on the video, do subscribe, you can become a channel member. As ever, if you haven't already, do us a favour, hit like on the video, do subscribe, you can become a channel member. Give us a lovely view on iTunes and buy your live show tickets. Would be great to see as many people there as possible on the 13th. We'll be back tomorrow. I'll put Ruby's feed up, video up, as I said, and then on Friday we'll do some just general Forest chat like we did yesterday with Temps in his car and his daughter. That was very freewheeling. But yeah, that's the plan. Steve, thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Matt, for having me.
No problem at all, no problem. Have a good day, everyone, and we shall see you soon.